Let me call this meeting to order. This is the time and the place for the regular board meeting of December 21st. Welcome to all of you who are with us. We have quite an audience today. We're thankful that you're here. And welcome to those who will be watching us on live stream or delayed broadcast. Allow me to introduce the few people at the table with me. To my right is Shawn Heitman. To my left, we start with Jan McGinnis, Mike Miller, and Sarah Falters. At the center table with me, to my right, is Paulette Newbold, the Board Secretary. To my left is Theron Schutie, the Superintendent of Schools, and I am Bea Niblock. We have a pink sheet on the speakers' table for you to sign if you are wishing to speak during public comment. You'll have five minutes to share your thoughts. The Board will not be able to respond to those comments as per our Board policy, but we thank you for your comments. Please read with me the mission for the Marshalltown Community School District. "We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences." Stand as you're able and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do we have any changes or additions to the agenda?
We did add one policy for review purposes on the annual meetings to the agenda.
May I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second. McGinnis, Falters, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries five, zero. Oh, let's see, we've got Karina. Unless you're voting against something, Karina, let me know.
Okay, it's aye.
Okay, so it's six, zero. Thank you. Mr. Sodders, you have some recognitions for us?
I do. I hope you all can hear and see me just fine. So, tonight for recognitions, I wanted to bring forward Abby Weldon and Mary Kate Groening. Mary Kate is joining us virtually as am I tonight. And Abby, I believe said she would be able to make it to the meeting if Abby is there. Could you please come up to the center table there? And I just wanted to introduce these two students. They are going to be working at State Capitol in Des Moines beginning January 11th, and they are both going to be legislative pages. And so, for those unfamiliar with the term of page, is a someone who works as an assistant, kind of, for a wide range of staff, lawmakers. I know Mary Kate is working for a special office. And both of these two students have been very interested in government and politics since eighth grade, if that was right. So, I will let them talk a little about their interest in this position and what they're looking forward to most from it, and about, you know, the other activities that they are involved in, students. So, if Abby is there at the meeting with you guys, maybe...
She is.
Okay, awesome. So, Abby, do you want to go first?
Sure. Is this, can you hear me? All good? Okay. So, yeah, Mary Kate and I have been friends for quite a long time. We both got into politics together in eighth grade. We have attended protests, gone to rallies together, just been really involved as a unit, kind of. And Ann Jackson, who is sitting behind me, took us on a trip in eighth grade to the State Capitol, and we presented essays that we had written addressing pieces of legislation to Mark Smith and Jeff Adler. And while we were there, we were also able to learn about the job opportunities for high school students. So, it's always kind of been on my radar, at least, that I would eventually do this. And I'm just glad it's all worked out. And, yeah, I'll start in January, so. If Mary Kate has anything she wants to add to that.
Go ahead, Mary Kate, if you're there.
Okay. Hi, thank you so much for recognizing Abby and I. I know we're both super excited. I've been interested in politics for quite a long time. And, yeah, so I really, I was exposed to the program when Mrs. Jackson took us down there. So, I'm really looking forward to meeting a lot of new people with different viewpoints. And because I'll be working for the Legislative Services Agency, which is a nonpartisan agency that helps with fiscal and legal analysis services, I'm really excited to see the true behind the scenes of government.
Thank you both for sharing with us. We offer you our congratulations on seeking these positions and achieving that. We also hope to hear stories when you're done. Thank you both.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Is that all from Adam?
Adam, do you have anything else?
Mary Kate and Abby were our only recognitions tonight, but I did want to add that they are both, incidentally, they are both XLP students and have been for much of their educational lives here at MCSD. So, you're going to hear from Ann Jackson, who introduced them to politics and government in that area of interest tonight at a later item. And then, also, those students happen to also be on the early graduate list. That's going to get for approval later, so, because they're exceptional students and we're really proud of them for representing MCSD down in Des Moines in April, January, springtime.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, looking at the board minutes of December 7th. Are there any additions or corrections? Are there any items of note in personnel? Looking at inter-agency agreements and contracts, we have a professional service agreement for an enrollment analysis with RSP Associates. We have an agreement with True Green for lawn service. We have a waiver with Allers and Cooney. And we have a certificate of substantial completion for the tennis complex. Are there any questions on those items? Looking at open enrollment, we have four in and one out. Are there any items of note in bills?
No.
Are there any questions from Board members on the monthly financial report? Looking at the disposition of obsolete equipment, we have a number of items no longer being used by buildings and grounds and transportation. The equipment will be sold at the best possible price in alignment with Board policy. We have some donations. We've received a donation from Marshalltown Company in the amount of $2,500 towards the Marshalltown High School robotics team. And the Ann Kaiser Charitable Trust also has donated $2,500 towards MHS botcats. And we have received coloring books for Marshalltown Community School District students in the value of $800. May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Miller Heitman, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Six, zero, the motion carries. Is there anybody on the pink sheet? Moving on to the education section of our meeting, we have a return to learn second semester update. Is Lisa doing that?
Yep. Lisa, are you ready?
I am. Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
As you may remember, two weeks ago at the last board meeting, I was there with our high school principal, Mr. Wyatt, and our co-principals from the middle school. And we were able to present some information for you about how our students were faring who had chosen virtual learning and our students who had been learning in the hybrid model of grade seven through 12. Can you hear me okay, Bea?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And as I said at that time, we had put a survey out to families, we gave them 10 days, shared with us their intentions for their children for second semester, and we shared the in and out numbers. The attachment to the board doc for today was an updated in and out by grade level by building for enrollment as of December 16th. That was the date on that picture in time. And we wanted to let you know that we're still pretty even. It appears that the elementary, more kids are wanting to come back to in-person learning. And at the secondary, more of our students are choosing to go virtual than had first semester. So, the reason why we are bringing this back to you tonight is because we, Dr. Schutie and I, will be making a recommendation to you for your approval for third quarter. And that, giving us the go-ahead on that allows us to staff those programs appropriately so that we are able to meet all of our students' needs, including students that might need support from special education teachers, EL teachers, et cetera. And we'll begin working on that as soon as we return from winter break pending your approval tonight.
Are you making the recommendation?
Dr. Schutie, did you want to share anything in particular, or did you want me to make the recommendation?
No, I can do that. So, probably to no surprise to the Board, given the fact that nothing really has changed relative to the original concerns that we've had that have led us to implement 23 different mitigation strategies in order to bring back as many willing and able students as we can while also providing an online option. We would recommend that the district continue for the third quarter, which essentially is from mid to latter January until the end of March, in the hybrid mode, hopeful that by the end of March and by the end of the third quarter, at a minimum, we're in a position of being able to have all of our employees vaccinated, which I think, based on what we're hearing from the federal government, is a real possibility. I think at the time that that occurs, that we can give more serious consideration to the possibility of bringing students back every day at the secondary level at Miller and at Marshalltown High School. The concern is simply based on the science of the numbers of people we have in the building, the size of the classrooms we have, our ability to social distance or not. Right now, in the hybrid model, with a quarter of our students doing online every day, we're able to at least guarantee a minimum three-foot social distancing. And through the implementation of face masks and desk shields, we feel fairly confident that we can mitigate or prevent student-to-student spread in that arrangement. We've also minimized the crossover of students by implementing block scheduling so that instead of switching courses seven to eight times a day, they're doing it three to four times a day. And where that comes into play is in the event of a student being deemed infected or positive with a virus, and through our contact tracing, the more class changes, the more different students that students wind up being around, the more people that wind up being negatively impacted by at least the quarantine, if not having acquired the virus from that close contact. As I shared at the last board meeting with the data that we had presented, the student-to-student situation and student infection rates or quarantine rates, we've been able to successfully keep that at a minimum. We've been very transparent with our school community in sharing weekly the number of positive cases that we have with all students and staff. As I've said from the beginning, our concerns in terms of being able to continue to offer face-to-face school rely probably more so on the health and well-being of our employees or our adults than we do the students, and that's kind of what has played out. As the data showed that we presented a week or two weeks ago, our adult positivity rate pretty much mirrors a community positivity rate. So, if things are going south in the community relative to people being infected with a virus or sick from the virus, it almost mirrors what's happening with our adults, which also kind of coincides with our theory thus far that most of those situations are, most but not all, are occurring outside of work versus inside of work, or else we'd probably see some other results from student infections and stuff like that. So, our plan would be to continue to stay the course. I know that we've got people on all sides of the coin, some thinking that we should just bring everybody back, some thinking it's not safe to have anybody back, and some, you know, in between. We've worked really hard from the inception of this return to learn plan to try to appease most, if not all, of those desires, knowing that we can't, we can't appease everybody 100% in doing what we need to do in order to best ensure that our students and employees have a safe teaching and learning environment. So, again, I think that we'll all be in a position of resting better once we're in a position of our 900-plus employees having the vaccine, which hopefully will be late winter or in the wintertime here. But that still doesn't change student availability of the vaccine, which right now, there's not even projected dates on that, given this current vaccine that's being distributed is probably only suitable for students if they were able to get at age 16 and above. So, with that being said, we need to be prepared when and if we're able to come out of the hybrid for potential significant shifts one way or the other. You know, we may have students coming back. We're likely to have students that, and/or families, that want to go entirely online. And anytime we make those changes, it requires a significant shifting of our resources and personnel, as far as teachers and paraprofessionals at a minimum, in order to accommodate that. And that's why, even though we have a portion of our students on online learning and we have students in hybrid learning, we have fewer teachers onsite teaching those students that are in person. And so, those class sizes look more representative of what they normally look like with fewer sections offered and fewer teachers available and less space within the classroom than you might imagine as a result of separating kids out into online and hybrid. So, we also will have social distancing challenges on our buses once we bring everyone back. Right now, we already have double and possibly, in some cases, triple routing going in order to provide the minimum three-foot social distancing with masks. I think we can do more double and triple routing once we do bring everybody back. But once again, for me to be able to say confidently that we can 100% guarantee social distancing, that's going to be probably a stretch at best. And, of course, social distancing as well as mask-wearing are two of the biggest mitigating factors of being able to provide a safe teaching and learning environment. So, I would anticipate that we will be back to the Board sometime in March to, again, talk about where we're at and what we may or may not be able to do in the bring forth a recommendation for the fourth quarter, just like we did between first and second quarter. And hopefully, we'll be in a better position at least to have, to feel comfortable with taking a look at another option.
Questions for Dr. Schutie or Dr. Stevenson?
I voted last time no. I thought that this is all a decision about trade-offs between risk and reward. And I'm going to vote no this time for the same reasons, that my feeling is that even all the things you said that are, resonate. I think that we can push it a little farther and get our kids back in school, and that we're doing real damage emotionally and educationally to them by keeping them out. And so, I understand and appreciate everything you said. I just have a different viewpoint on it.
May I have a motion to approve the recommendation? I'll vacate the chair and second that motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Karina?
Sorry, I said aye.
Thank you. The motion carries four, two.
She said aye for...
Aye for what?
Approving or not approving?
Yes, approving, approving.
The motion carries four, two. Ladies from XLP, I don't know who's here. I know that we have some masks here. Would you please come forward and be sure and introduce yourselves before you begin your presentation?
Can I start the presentation by saying that the XLP team, the K-12 team of teachers, there are five total, have had this presentation ready and have been eager to share this with you since last spring, but due to COVID, their presentation continues to get tabled for other reasons. And now, they've polished it up and added some new things to it based on our first semester of working together. I have taken over being the supervisor of the XLP program for K-12 and have enjoyed every second of it. We have some just amazing teachers, and I'm not sure if all five are there, because I can't see people, I can just see the presentation, but they have put together an information-packed presentation for you tonight. And hopefully, you'll have some questions that they can ask or answer for you at the end or answer at another time.
Thank you, Lisa. I'm Susan Fritzell. I'm going to start, and I'll introduce them all as I speak. I'm probably, I'm the oldest member of our group. Lisa, I've been here 20 years, so I've seen this program evolve for a long time, and it's changed and changed. And I really do believe we're very mighty, though we're very small. There's five staff members of the Extended Learning Program at our school. But we're very pleased here to be here with you and share what we've done. Our presentation is going to take you through, first, who we are and why we exist, why do we have this program for talented and gifted students at all. Then we're going to talk about some of the new changes we've made to the program. We're always evaluating, and we're really excited about this one change we've made in identification measures. And finally, we'll talk about what we do with our students. So, I'm going to, oh, next slide, please. And so, we are staffed by, at the elementary level, Deb Christensen and Nicole Holman-Lankema share two elementary schools. At Lenahan, Vanessa Engel covers Lenahan and MLA. Ann Jackson's at Miller Middle School, and I'm at the high school. So, this is...
So, is there some wipes there?
Thanks.
Do you mind using one before you hand it on?
Yes, okay. Next, we're going to hear from Vanessa.
Yes, thank you. So, rationale. Marshalltown students demonstrate a range of academic abilities. So, the needs of our gifted and talented learners are not always met by the regular curriculum. The XLP program helps high-ability students meet their academic potential. If you would like to view some of the Iowa code that this pertains to, the code numbers are 257.42, 257.44, and 257.46. One thing that I would also like to note, and something that we do as a part of our program, is that when it comes to the professional learning communities that we all do throughout the Marshalltown Community School District, a lot of our focus goes into helping teachers answer question number four, which is, what do we do with the students once they already know it? Also, oops, Board policy. So, if you would like to go ahead and peruse any of the Board policies that have to do with high-ability students, they are listed here, and they're all links, and also how we can potentially assist with acceleration policy.
Thank you. So, the Extended Learning Program works on these core philosophy pieces. First of all, our job is to deepen and extend the core content for students, and we do this by altering the process, the pace, and the expected outcomes for our students. We also believe that gifted and talented students have specific social and emotional needs that we help address. We believe that gifted and talented students need opportunities to interact with peers who have similar abilities and similar interests. We believe that identification for the Extended Learning Program needs to include multiple data points or multiple criteria. And finally, it's important to know that XLP is a strength-based intervention and not a deficit intervention.
So, we want to tell you about our recent journey. A few years ago, our, well, maybe 10 years ago, our community keeps getting more and more diverse, and we're really committed to being at the forefront of gifted education. And so, we've been lucky that we've been allowed to attend Iowa Talented and Gifted Association meetings, conferences, the National Association of Gifted Children conferences. We also, in the last two years, attended the Heartland AEAs, Talented and Gifted Academy. And through all these things, we really have had time to think strongly about what we do and how we do it, and evaluate how we can make it better. And all that being said, what we really realized was we needed to change our identification strategies. And that led to something called the cognitive abilities test. And we started that at third grade, and also now we do it at sixth grade. And so, Nicole and Deb are going to explain a lot more about that to you.
So, when you're talking about giving students another test, do you want it to be purposeful and not just giving more tests? Because if there's one thing students don't want more of, it's more tests. But with the COGAT, or the cognitive ability test, like Ms. Jackson said, we want multiple measures when we're looking at identifying and serving our high-ability students. And so, by adding this COGAT test, we're able to look at the achievement data from ISAS testing as well as ability testing through this test. It measures cognitive ability, which uncovers any gaps between achievement and ability. It examines verbal, quantitative, and spatial reasoning, and it's both approved for and supportive of English language learners. As I just stated, ISAS measures achievement testing, and this COGAT is ability. In other words, ability tests, like the COGAT, can show how quickly students can acquire new learning. Certain kids are going to acquire new learning faster. Why did we choose the COGAT? In 2018, a few of us were able to attend the National Association of Gifted Children Conference. And while there, we were able to speak with the keynote speaker, Dr. Scott Peters. He had just completed some research where he was focusing on under-representation in subgroups in high-ability learning. Given our demographics here in Marshalltown, that was something that we knew that we wanted to focus on and improve. And so, through this, this is one example, this is one of his slides that he used and was kind enough to share with us. In Broward County, Florida, they received a grant to be able to do the COGAT and to incorporate it into their identification as well as their service to children there. You'll notice that during the two years they had that grant funding and were able to incorporate the COGAT, representation of typically underrepresented groups went up. When that funding ran out and they stopped giving... underrepresented groups went up. When that funding ran out and they stopped giving the COGAT, those plummeted. We chose to universally screen starting at third grade because that's when they start testing for ISAS. So we have the comparison data there. And research shows that the maturity level and growth and development will enable them to handle such rigorous testing. When we communicate with several other tag programs or XLP programs across both the state and nationally, third grade tends to be the standard for giving the COGAT test.
All right. So examples of the COGAT test. The COGAT test or the cognitive abilities test comes with three separate batteries. The batteries are the verbal battery, which contains the verbal analogies, the quantitative battery, which contains the number analogies, and then the spatial visualization, which contains the figure analogies. So within these three batteries, each subtest is approximately 10 minutes long. With the directions, this can range from 45 minutes to one hour for testing. The full battery of the COGAT can be used to narrow the talent pool as needed. It contains the same three batteries, but within each of the batteries, there are three subtests. If you would like to go ahead and click on the student practice link, if you like, you could take a look at some of those actual sample questions. This particular test is from the Riverside Data Manager resources. It's level nine, so it's the exact same level that our third graders would be taking. So there'd be examples such as sky is to blue as grass is to green. So the student would have to select the best possible word to fit within that analogy.
Okay, so this slide shows the results after we administered the COGAT last year. So this is the 2019-20 data that we had. So prior to administering this test, we were serving 23 students at the third grade level. And these were based on teacher recommendations or parent nominations. We had not done a universal screener. In that group, we had no students that were represented as English language learners, five that were in our subgroups, and 18 that were general population. So after the universal screener, which we did online, and Riverside Data Manager is the company that we contracted with, so they are able to disaggregate all of our data and create local norms based on our population. So we went from serving 23 students to serving 73 students. 10 of them were English language learners, 30 were in our subgroups, and 32 were in general population. And this just is another way to look at the data. So prior to the test, 22% were in the subgroup and 78 were in the general population. Post the universal screener, we had 55 in our subgroup and 45 general population, which is much more representative of our local population.
So this next slide shows our identification process. And this used to happen at fifth grade, but now that we've added the universal screener, we're able to identify students for XLP program in third grade. You can go ahead to the next slide and I'll go through each step. So the first step in our identification process is a screening for talent pool. Like Ms. Christensen described, students can be nominated by their classroom teacher or by parent nomination. Also, students' ISAS data is included. And now we have the universal screener of the COGAT test for all third graders. So about 10% of our students are in the talent pool. And then what happens is all the student scores are put on a spreadsheet, their names are blacked out, and a committee of teachers and administrators sorts through that data and identifies the students who need XLP services. They're identified. That's step three. And Ms. Engel will talk about more what happens after they're identified. Another important piece is step four, an annual rescreening. So students are identified for XLP programming in third grade, but each year, Ms. Engel, myself, and Mrs. Fritzel will ask for teacher nominations again. We'll look at ISAS data. And for students who are new to the district, we can administer a COGAT for those students. So we're always looking for students who might have shown growth, who might have popped later. And we can screen those students and identify them for XLP services later in their academic career.
All right. After identification, what's next? So students selected from the talent pool are interviewed by the XLP teacher for direct services. We use an interest inventory. We use interview questions. And then we develop a personal education plan or a PEP. Also, if a student or family declines services with us, they are placed back into the talent pool for future rescreening. So this is an example of a personal education plan or a PEP. It is similar to the Individualized Education Plan or the IEP in special education. Both are used to personalize the learning of students based on their needs. However, the PEP is strengths-based and focuses in on areas where the student could use more challenge in their education, while in the IEP focuses in on areas where the student requires more aid. Okay, so within the PEP, it contains information like a record of the test scores from the student, levels of growth, whether a student made expected levels of growth per year, as well as student academic goals or social emotional goals that we create along with the students. This is something that we can use to track their progress throughout their education through the Marshalltown Community School District. And another thing that's pretty wonderful is we can even add bits of student work to help us journalize, journal what they have been doing all the way across through Marshalltown Community School District. Okay, so now, how do we actually serve the students? We've identified them. We've interviewed them, but what do we do with them? You can consider what we do on the MTSS model or the multi-tiered support systems. I think that's what it stands for. Just like you probably have seen this for MTSS for students who are having deficits or for behavior problems. So if you can think of all our students basically being served first at tier one level, which means every teacher serves them because every teacher has these kids in every classroom. And then tier two serves kids in small group interventions. And then intensive interventions for kids, certain kids at the tier three level. Next slide. So some examples coming. At tier one, we differentiate our standard curriculum through pacing projects, products. Every teacher does that. And we, as XLP teachers, will often help with ideas for those regular classroom teachers. We also offer advanced coursework to every student in our school if they're able and willing, especially at the high school. And then at the tier two level, academic competitions or small group enrichment. At the high school, for example, we have a math team. That's a group of kids who are exceptional with math, coming together and working. I also have poetry out loud. And example of that current events group that went down and learned about being pages is an example of small group enrichment. And we have mentorships and acceleration and independent studies for those tier three kids. So that's fine. You can keep going. So what are, even though what it looks like tier one, two, and three look very different at different levels of elementary, middle school, high school, what we do with those students is similar with our goals. So you can slide forward. Keep going, keep going. So and these are our basic goals, K through 12 for our students, to help them understand themselves and their special needs because they are gifted, to help them understand how to communicate well in a very diverse community, to help them become self-directed, independent learners, especially right now in time of virtual learning, to establish their critical and creative thinking, and also to help them plan for their education and career in the future. This year, our PLC is really focused on that self-direction and that's what we're assessing ourselves on. Okay, Ann?
Well, I am so glad that I get to share this slide. So how does our program compare to other schools? Recently, with the help of Central Rivers AEA, we sent out a survey because we really wanted to know how our program compared with our geographic neighbors and with other schools of similar sizes. And what we found was, under the direction of the board, with the help of Mr. Kretzinger and Dr. Stevenson, our offerings far outsee those of schools in neighboring districts and schools that are the same size. So that's a really great, great thing for all of us, especially for our students. So we've made it a priority. We really want to share these great things that are happening. So one thing is the smore newsletter. Each of us will write a newsletter to the families of our students to let them know what's happening in our program. And the other is our XLP Facebook page. And we have more than 500 followers on Facebook, so that's great. We can share the good news about XLP with lots of people. And also this spring, we use that as a tool to connect with our students when they weren't in class and offer enrichment opportunities to families that way. So that was really successful for us. Next slide. So looking to the future, we're excited about learning and adjusting to our district's needs and to the ever-changing population of our students. If you're interested, that the compass is a hyperlink to our full program manual. So if you'd ever care to read that, we'd be happy to have you read it. And we'd really like to thank you for having us come. And we would entertain any questions you have. And I'm sure all of my peers want to come up and join me for the questions.
You know, I don't have a question, but I have an attaboy. You know, the expression I've heard that says, "Passion first and everything else will work out." And I haven't had an opportunity to know or get to know each and every one of you, but several of you have. And you guys all have a great deal of passion. And that's really commendable. And I say, I mean, you've been a real blessing for families in the district. So thanks for all your hard work and all your great passion.
Thank you. Any other questions for us?
Thank you, ladies, for sharing with us this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Stevenson, are you ready to share at-risk budget information?
I am. Two weeks ago, I presented a slideshow to you that laid out our at-risk program budgets and services that we have used for the 1920 school year. And then mapped out a plan for services for the 2122 school year. And we were able to go through some of the ways that the program has grown and changed over the last four to five years, and also looked at some items that we want to keep on in the forefront or in our consideration for future budget years to help expand and grow our at-risk program even more. And then in addition to the slideshow that I shared... Sorry? In addition to the slideshow that I shared, you also had a one-page PDF that was from Paulette's office that went through our fiscal year '21 and '22. Budgets, current approved budget and approved, suggested budget for approval for fiscal year '22. As a reminder to some of our new board members, at-risk is one of our categorical budgets that must be approved at a different time of the year than others. It has to be approved by January 15. I think it's the 15. Correct me, Paulette, if I'm wrong on that one. And for that reason, you're giving this information in December for information two weeks ago and for approval tonight. And so we did have some questions at the last board meeting about services and budget impact. And I believe answers those at the time. And so with that, I am presenting to you tonight for your approval, a request for modified supplemental amount of $1.6 million for the 2122 school year, which will help protect and support our at-risk learners or potential dropout. And then, Paulette, do you want to give any greater detail to that budget document as a form of review?
Sure. So the recommendation was for $1.6 million in modified supplemental amount, which is a slight increase over the current year to accommodate annual increases in salaries, benefits, and all other costs. And we are estimating at this point, using some assumptions, that this will keep the rate, the tax rate for this program steady.
Any questions for Paulette or Dr. Stevenson? May I have a motion to approve the request for modified supplemental amount of $1,600 for the 2021-22 school year?
Second?
Altus Heitman, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same? The motion carries six zero. Want to go right on, Lisa, for teacher co-training?
Yes. Thank you for your support of the at-risk program. The next item on the agenda is brought to you because of the amount of, the total amount is over $25,000. So we want to bring to your attention and ask for your approval for us to continue to support our English learners and our students with IEPs through the co-teaching model. And as you can see there in the public comment section, public content section, with this approved budget of $34,965, we will be able to train 27 Marshalltown staff members. This includes teachers, directors, and administrators. There also is a cadre of staff from Central Rivers AEA that will be joining this training with us. And they are doing their own purchase order and registration. But I'm excited that we have that commitment from them to help us continue to support this important work so that our students with IEPs and our students who are learning English can continue to stay in their general education classes, especially at middle school and high school, and get the expertise of a content area teacher, but also have the expertise of an English language teacher or a special education teacher who understands the value of co-planning with that teacher, co-instructing, and co-assessing. And as some background information, the district has been, has had a handful of people trained in this in the past, but unfortunately, those people have left the district. And we had, we needed to recreate more of a system-level thinking of how can we make this a priority and train at a grade enough level that we won't be in that situation again. And lastly, where is this money coming from? These registrations fees, which this is a completely virtual registration that's a four-day conference, will be covered by either Title III, which supports our English learners, or Special Education Professional Development Fund.
Mr. Kretzinger, do you have anything to add?
I was just here to support answering any questions people have, or...
I really do want to address this. And I did email you that I would do so. As a special educator and a general education teacher, I've been on both sides of this equation. First, doing my first co-teaching back in the 1980s. So this is not a new model. There is little or no empirical evidence that supports it. And I don't like the idea of special education monies being directed toward teacher training of this particular model because there are much more effective interventions. And I believe we should be teaching, training our teachers to use more effective strategies, things that are actually backed by research. This whole movement just reminds me so much of Whole Language. It was so popular and everybody just loved it, but it was never supported by empirical evidence. And in the end, it didn't work. And we spent 30 years on this. And we keep retraining our teachers. And we keep saying, "Well, if you just did it this way, it would work better. If you just did it that way." It occasionally works. I've been in a couple good situations where it worked well, but it didn't work well because of this particular delivery model. It worked well because of the teachers who were involved and the type of training they brought into the situation. I'd much rather see our teachers doing more collaborative planning, much more like you do with your learning teams, okay? And then planning collaboratively, going back into their classrooms, teaching, getting back together with their assessment data, and talking about what worked with their students and what didn't. We'd get a lot more, a lot further. And some of the co-teaching results in large... And some of the co-teaching results in large classes with two adults in them, and then the noise level is high for your students that are distractible. It would be better to have smaller classes with only one adult than a large class with two. So, there's just a lot of problems with this particular delivery model, and I'm not comfortable with spending a lot of money continually retraining teachers to do it.
Would you like me to respond to that?
You may.
Okay. So...
So, the Marsh Town District has used co-teaching in the past.
It was something that was sunsetting when I came to the district, and one of the things that we have to really think about is first, what has happened on the national stage with research, as well as the legal precedents set by the federal government under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Also, different models have had different evolutions. And so, as we start thinking about this model here, which is through the Bureau of Educational Research, it's not the common one that most people have learned about or read about, done by Maryland Friend.
But it is the, I'm looking at an article, the metacognitive analysis, that was written in 2020, and it is what you're looking at training these teachers to do. With, with a six different, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, teaching is an art and a science, and making sure our teachers are able to do everything you talked about is highly important. They have to know how to co-plan together. They know how, have to know how to instruct people together, and they have to know how to assess together. And that's not something that you learn through a PLC model. That's not something you learn as you come out of a college. That's something you need really explicit instruction on. As we try to make sure all of our kids are included as much as possible, having access to core content, it's training like this that provides them with the skills and knowledge they need, so they can be successful working with their kids. When we think about children with disabilities, it's really important that we're giving them the same educational opportunities we give with all kids. And one of the historic things our district has been challenged on by our Iowa Department of Education, is the amount of time that we take kids with disabilities and move them out of the general classroom, do things with them, and then put them back in, because they're missing so much instruction when you pull them out. So, when appropriate, this is an opportunity for one model, for our kids to get that access of what's going on in core, as well as have their special education needs met. And it's very similar with English learners as well. It is also promoted by the Center of Educational Research, which is the offshoot, offshoot of the federal government at this point. So, if you look on the website of the CEC, they will talk about this as one of their promoted methods of instruction.
They do, but they don't have empirical research that supports it, and the, the legislators that write this legislation are not classroom teachers, and they're depending on the information they get. And I'm not completely against cooperative teaching or co-teaching. I just feel strongly that we keep beating a dead horse here. We keep redoing the same thing. We call it different things. We tweak it a little bit, but ultimately, we have to stop sending these kids through with excuses for not teaching them to read, or excuses for not teaching them to study, or excuses for not teaching them to attend. So, unless you can show me how this benefits children, and not just lawmakers and us adults in the room, I, I can't support it.
Other comments, questions? Dr. Stevenson, do you have anything that you'd like to add at this time?
Oh, I was just going to say that we're really excited to be able to have a evidence-based strategy that our teachers have been asking for, training in and support with. Our instructional coaches in particular, and our CPDLs, as well as some of our new principals, have not had an opportunity to have this formalized training, and they recognize that there is evidence out there that supports, especially for our long-term English learners, that this is the best way to make the content comprehensible for them when they're learning in their core classes, especially at middle school and high school. And so, I guess one other thing that I'm really excited about is the fact that we've had so much buy-in from our building administrators who want to see the PLC process continue to work, and they see the special education team as kind of that missing piece of the puzzle, like, what can we do to get them more support, so that they feel like they're, you know, at the table and offering and being seen as a valuable member of the planning team for content and special education services. So, I'm just, I'm excited to see the outcomes, and we will definitely report back should we get your approval tonight, at how the training went, and what our next steps are, so that we can get all of our teachers off on the right foot in August, when we start our new school year, and have our new co-teaching pairs, whether they're EL teachers or special education teachers.
You know, $34,000 is a lot of money in my part of the world, and I'm no educator like Jan is, but I know that the numbers, when I, I guess I understand the numbers. Janelle used to tease me that I was like, just cared about numbers, and that's all I cared about. But I know the numbers for student achievement aren't where I want them to be, and I think we probably all agree about that. And so, if we can give teachers tools to make them better, so that kids' numbers get better, I'm all for that. I don't know how to do that. You're the expert in that, and you're bringing me a recommendation. And so, if you think that there is a chance of that happening, then I'm for it. Jan doesn't seem to think so, and she's probably against it. I'm not the expert on this particular thing. You are, I guess. So, the proof ought to be in when you come here and how are the numbers doing, student achievement?
And I'll be delighted if it works, but at this point, I'm, I'm extremely skeptical.
May I have a motion to approve the co-teaching training for 27 staff members?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Heitman Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-1.
Did he go on, Jack? Yeah.
You even see it, huh?
I couldn't. Too much light in there. I think it's too bright here in town.
Go on YouTube.
It's so exciting for him. He's staying out there and not coming back to tell us, and we should all come.
He's just transfixed. No, it's too much of that haziness, and it's too, too light around the town to see through it.
I think I'm going to go home. I live out. It just doesn't quite do it justice, you know? Doesn't quite make it. Well, heck.
Is that Sattert off to the right?
Yes.
I thought so. Almost see the rings.
I was, I told Bee earlier today, I had a acquaintance who used to work at the DE, texted me a picture from his family room, looking out at where you could see the spec yesterday.
They would have been almost aligned yesterday. All right, well, the best-laid plans. Fui, fui, fui. Well, Mr. Satters, are you ready to do the marketing update?
I am indeed.
Okay. It is.
All right. Well, and let me know if, if at any point you lose my audio here. But yes, tonight, so I wanted to present my recommendation, and this, this action item is currently set to come before you in the January meeting, but I wanted to share this information with you tonight, for your consideration. So, my recommendation for a communications marketing audit would be to go with the recommend, or to go with the proposal from ISPR, so that's the National School Public Relations Association. So, I, it was one of three proposals I got from three reputable organizations. The other two are from a business called CISO, who provides school public, public relations professional development, and from, of course, the Emperor's Area, so Area Education Association. So, the ISPR audit is the most in-depth, by far, of the three proposals that we've got, and I believe, and I believe it'll meet our, our district's needs, as closely as any of the three proposals that we were able to get. I was able to review this proposal as well, the other two with Dr. Shute, and the ISPR audit will provide us with, basically, a focus on our various stakeholder groups. So, obviously, our parents, but not just our parents, individual groups of parents. We have a multifaceted community, so it's important that we capture, in the focus groups, group conversations, it's important that we capture as much of the opinion and the feedback that we possibly can for that kind of process. ISPR has, is going, in this proposal, they have offered ten focus groups, and we, we have a lot of power to shape, you know, we help them identify those groups, but we also have a lot of power to shape, you know, which exact groups we talk to. In addition, I'm happy to say to this, ISPR, where the DE is quite supportive of our significant non-English-speaking school population, so they do not have a bilingual person that they descend to fully conduct the focus groups in a different language, but with our support, with, with dual-language staff or dual-language community members, they will add 30 minutes to every focus group meeting that's designated for non-English speakers, and they would provide materials, dual-language materials, invitations and, and things like that for the focus groups for us. So, they would do, they'd bring every resource they could to help us on, on that front as well, when it comes to setting up those focus, focus group discussions. They would also focus on the marketing aspect for anything, and so, that's an area where I look forward to hearing their expertise, hearing where we can improve, and build on what we already have, and get some new suggestions as well. This process would also, of course, you know, just like any other audit of any other aspect of the district or an, or an organization, we would also look at our current practices, tools, strategies, policies, procedures, and also make suggestions for changes or improvements there. But overall, this, in, so this audit proposal comes in at an offer of $14,500. The, that price is reduced now that we are officially ISPR members, and as I said, it just for a litany of reasons compared to the other two proposals. I believe this proposal aligns with our district's strategic plan. I believe it aligns with our areas of focus. We're very oriented toward our students and our staff and our parents and families, and that's exactly the center of this audit. So, it would be in-depth. It would take, you know, the, the estimate I was given was about 14 weeks or so to collect all of the data, to synthesize it, and to give us the recommendations the audit reported itself. But it would, you know, it would go toward directly supporting our updated 2021 communications and marketing plan, and it would, I think, move us forward significantly on a whole range of things, as far as communications and marketing here. So, try to keep all of that in a nutshell as much as I can, but I also wanted to give you guys time to, time to ask me questions, or share your thoughts.
Questions for Adam? I know that marketing has been something that the board has had on its list of goals for a number of years. I would like to see the board support such an audit, a communications and marketing audit. You all know how I feel about having the AEA do it.
No, why don't you tell them?
I would prefer not.
I'm just kidding.
Our recent book study, The Great Conversation, Schools Can't Do It Alone, talked about the significant importance of having a comprehensive communications audit, which I think could help springboard us towards more substantive conversations with the school community in that regard. But obviously, that marketing piece also has been something that has been a challenge and/or lacking, and I think we can build upon some of the community-based work, like what Visha Marsh Town did by having one focus, particularly on our school community, but taking into account the school-relevant information that came out through that. ISPR is a national school public relations organization, so it'd be kind of the National School Board Association version of what Adam is a member of at the state level. Obviously, we want something more robust than what the AEA can provide. When I looked at both the CISO proposal, as well as this ISPR proposal, for CISO to give us anything close to what ISPR is proposing, I think we'd be looking at very comparable price points, because they kind of gave us their base price based on minimal service, and said, "We'll be willing to do more for you for more money," which pretty much led me to believe it would pretty much mirror what ISPR, which is a pretty widely-recognized organization, provide. So, I'm, I'm supportive of what Adam has put forward.
Do I assume, Adam, that you'll come back at our next meeting with a recommendation?
I will, and in that time, please, if you'd like to look through the materials, if you haven't already, and please feel free to reach out if you have any questions for me. I'm really excited about doing this. I'm really excited about doing this because I feel like it'll be, you know, it'll be something comprehensive that we can use as a very solid base to build on. I think we have a lot of great tools, and I think that this is the logical next step for us.
Thank you. Hayley, do you have an update for us all by yourself?
Yeah, all by myself tonight.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
See, it is important, and we just can't see it.
I must believe why the astronomy group went out to Green Castle.
Okay, so life in MHS, nothing really, too major has happened, so. Okay, so the past events that you may have heard of last meeting was, so the band started their annual fundraiser. So they do a fruit sale through Hy-Vee and the Four Seasons fundraising, so that's kind of like a chocolate, like that kind of stuff. So they did that, they raised a thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars, so that's pretty good for them, especially during COVID. They had some big buyers kind of not buy as much this year. They informed me about. So, and then they also had the SKIBA Honor Band competition this year, although they didn't get a go and participate, they sent in some planes they had done. And from both of the bands, two students from Marshalltown were selected, so that was good news. All right, and then the Gingerbread House Competition the high school held, let's see, they were due on the fourteenth, and here was one of the winners right there pictured. Then our sports update is the basketball teams have had, have been doing pretty good. The girls' season has been a little rough lately, but that's their varsity poster for the year with their slogan, putting in work to build something great. So they played Centennial on Friday, and they all came home with losses, but the both teams are at Southeast Polk right now playing. So hopefully, they'll bring home a win for us. And then for swimming, the senior night was on Thursday, and the meet was against Ankeny. The score to the meet was one seventeen to fifty-three, resulting in a loss for the Bobcats. So they had a meet scheduled at Johnston actually tonight, but it was canceled. So they're in, they're at Carroll High School right now competing to make up that missed meet. And that's all.
Questions for Hayley?
I think the swim team had a rescheduled meet for tonight, which is why Claudia couldn't be here.
Yep, it's at Carroll High School.
Oh, that's one at Carroll.
Yep. Anything else? Nope, all right.
Enjoy break. Mrs. Wyant?
Hello.
Hello.
I come to you this evening with a very small list of students who have applied, submitted paperwork, to be mid-year graduates as seniors and to be early graduates as juniors. In the past, the list of seniors has probably been three times longer, but we ran short of credits. Different things happened at the end of last year, so it's, it's going to be an uphill battle, but we're committed to getting everybody there. So this is all contingent upon their completing the graduation requirements set forth by board policy for Marshalltown Community School District.
Questions for Mrs. Wyant? I have a motion to approve the 2020, 2021 school year early graduates as presented.
So moved.
Second.
McGinnis Miller, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. Motion carries six zero.
Mrs. Wyant, I was thinking during our student recognition that that's a pretty unique work-based learning experience that those two students are going to have, so hopefully they count that towards, but I can't really.
Absolutely, we want to get all of that data into our infinite campus system so we can give every student credit for the work-based learning that they're doing. You bet.
Did I see Rex come in?
Yes.
Always behind the post.
Tonight, I'm here representing our small vehicle purchases. Todd and I have been looking at the vehicles used by Billings and Grounds, and there is a need to do replacement of two trucks. We compared those to the state bid, and then we also looked at lift gate and two plows because a lift gate on the one truck is not worth moving from that truck over, and we would get more value on resale if it's attached to the truck that we have to move on. There's some other problems with the truck, so repairing is not the good move for us right now. So we're within the budget. Paulette and I had have a conversation about budget, and we were able to make everything work within the budget that is asked. Todd and I have been over this list. We're recommending purchase of three-quarter ton trucks to do the work that they need, one from Jensen, one from Clements. We're also asking for the purchase of a snowplow, one from Central Iowa and one from showroom, and then the lift from Central Iowa Machines for the total amount of seventy-three thousand one hundred and seventy-one fifty-seven. This meets our needs as we continue to work to improve our small fleet and keep us viable as we keep improving as a district.
When you, when you speak about budget, you're talking about our annual replacement cycle as it relates to either the buses and or the vehicles using our PEPL funding.
Yep, that is correct.
You know, these prices were really close. I like the way that you went to local businesses to get your quotes, and I like the way that you spread around the local business a little bit because the quotes were so close. So thank you for keeping the tax money local and for spreading it out a little bit when they're so, such competitive bids.
Yeah, when we looked on the state bid and looked at what was, could be bid, we did, it was, there was no reason to go outside of our community as, as is because of what our dealers will do here for us.
Other questions or comments? I have a motion to approve the equipment as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Altus Miller, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Paulette?
Yes, so Rex also has a couple of vehicles that we would like to put out for bid for sale. And so this, we just need to set the notice, set the time and place for the public hearing, and we'll publish the notice for that hearing. And the hearing would take place on January nineteenth at five o'clock PM for the sale of a 2006 Ford F-350 truck and a 2007 Ford F-250 four-by-four truck.
Questions or comments? I have a motion to approve the adoption of a resolution announcing the proposed sale and published notice of time and place of a public hearing.
Move for approval.
Second.
Miller Heitman, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries six zero. And we're back to you again.
Yeah, so this is something that we actually did at a previous meeting, and then we discovered that it did not have the right school year on it. So we're just asking you to reapprove this motion for administrative services for River Hills and seeking additional allowable growth or.
Budget review.
Yeah, for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Questions for Paulette?
Move for approval.
Second.
Miller Heitman, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries six zero. And we are to board policies.
Yay.
I have the first one. Old 2041 becomes 210.2. I don't think any changes have been made since the last meeting, so.
You're raking the amending of that?
Yes.
Okay. Let's get the other ones on there and do them all at once.
And the same holds true for the other three policies that are at first reading, 102, equal educational opportunities, 603.2, summer school instruction, and 603.3, special education. We made some adjustments as deemed appropriate and recommended by the Iowa Association of School Boards, which were presented to you in the form of review. We have not made any additional changes to that since you last saw it. So in conjunction with one that Director Heitman presented, I would recommend that the board amend these four policies and approve, leaving the second reading.
I have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Altus McGinnis, is that correct?
McGinnis.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. Motion carries six zero.
So for the initial review, as I mentioned, when we adjusted or amended the agenda, we, we added 210.1, which is on the annual meeting, the board's annual meeting. Director Miller has two policies, one of which is the organizational meeting, and one of the things that we recognized through his review that we needed to do is make it clear that whereas we vote annually for a president and vice president of the board that under previous circum, or previous board cycle, that had always taken place at the organizational meeting, but since that meeting only happens every other year due to the legal changes on board elections, that in the year that an organizational meeting, which adopts new board members, doesn't happen, then the, the voting of the president and vice president would happen at the annual meeting. So we've made amendments to both of those policies to reflect that. So those would come back at the next meeting. That would be 210.1, annual meeting, and one of the policies that Mike reviewed, 204.5, organizational meeting.
And also 200.1R1?
Yes, that.
And 212?
That regulation would come back as well because we had to adjust it to reflect that language.
So those four policies, 210, 200, 204, 212, will come back at the next meeting.
The other one that I had closed session, you didn't talk about that?
Right.
204.3. Those are pretty minor little changes. I would recommend that those be marked as reviewed. There's a number change.
Right. So that's 212 now, right?
It was 204.3, now 212.
Yep, okay. So 212 will be marked as reviewed instead of coming back.
And we have three other policies before you that we're recommending the same take place. We, as a part of the policy primer, we reviewed 607.2, student health services, 605.6, internet appropriate and safe use, and 701.2. There were either title or legal reference changes, but nothing to the substance of the policies, so we would recommend those be marked as reviewed.
607.2, 605.6, and 701.2, is that correct?
Yes.
Any objections?
Not as far as the content, but on 607.2, I don't understand why they have parentheses there, so you might want to just look at that from an editing perspective.
I didn't hear you.
On 607.2, there's a set of parentheses that doesn't quite make sense where it is, so it might be just from an editing perspective.
Okay, we can look at that. And then I think the only other policy is 507.8, special health services. So there was some changes to help differentiate between a student individualized health plan versus a student educational, independent educational plan. So that policy would come back for a first reading.
Are there any questions for Dr. Shute at this time? Okay. Any items of note in communications, Adam?
Well, other than, other than the communications audit proposal that I spoke about earlier, just, you know, we're continuing to move forward with, Joe, for one, and I are continuing to move forward with our STEM best class, and it's exciting to see the kids now start to get more hands-on experience with the equipment. And we've had, since our last meeting, we've had much of that equipment now finally arrive, and we're now able to start playing with the, with the new toys and the new equipment in ways that I'm just excited to see our students and Doug working with that. So otherwise, in, in the time between now and the January fourth meeting, I'm going to be continuing to work on engaging in conversations with the building administrators to build up building ambassadors. My goal eventually, of course, is to have sort of a team of ambassadors across the district to help facilitate building-level communication as well as help us produce more word-of-mouth, more positive word-of-mouth about the district, programs, students, just everything that we're working on. So aside from that, like I said, just let me know if you have any questions about the audit, proposals, and recommendations that will be forthcoming, and hope you guys all have a good holiday break.
Thank you. Looking at reminders, we have a board work session on January twenty-fifth at five. There's a school improvement advisory committee coming up in January. Karina and Jan are on that committee for us. Allow committee meets in May, so that's a ways out. Community Auditorium Foundation meets in April, that's a ways out. For the January nineteenth meeting, Karina has the two policies on rules of order and compensation for expenses. Tuesday, January nineteenth is our next meeting. We have had some committee report, committees meet since we last met. The Auditorium Foundation, Marshalltown Performing Arts, met electronically, Darren?
Sort of. Yeah, there was, recently, they have replaced the carpet in the lobby, which had been approved by the committee, and upon completing what they had arranged, they had recognized they really should have included one of the stair walls in the lobby. Otherwise, it was looking kind of good with good and bad, so the committee took an online vote to allow Al Paxton to go ahead and have the local flooring provider go ahead and add what was necessary to get that stairwell done ahead of what otherwise would have been scheduled. That's something that's, the lobby area is funded by the Auditorium Foundation, so we pay the initial outlay to the local business and then get reimbursed for that from the Auditorium Committee.
The equity committee met. Sean or Karina, do you have anything to share?
Yeah, it was, I thought, a really good meeting. We met as a whole group and looked a little bit at some humanics survey data that had recently been compiled, and then we split up into subgroups to talk a little bit about that, and then more about sort of what each of our subgroups were going to be trying to accomplish this year. And then we got back together and talked about that again. There's a, what's becoming, I think it's now a three-page Google Doc full of all that information on it, that I'm sure Dr. Ryan would happily make available to anybody who wants to take a look at it. I'm not going to read the whole thing to you guys, so. That's it. But there are, what, one, two, three, four, at least four of the people who were at the meeting who were here tonight, if anybody else wants to share.
Karina?
Karina, are you there?
Well, I can share, serving on the committee and subcommittee. I would say, from my perspective, the discussions which have evolved from these committee and subcommittee meetings have been much richer and substantive than probably what we've had in the past. I'd say, at least in the subcommittee that I've been involved with on school community business or partnerships and our engagement, we've always felt there's not enough time for everybody to share everything that they'd like to. I think ultimately, the goal is for the subcommittees to provide some deliverables in the form of strategic objectives that can be worked on and or achieved by years, and particularly as it relates to hiring and professional development, I think, for the most part. Is that accurate, Nora?
Student enrollment.
Oh, yeah, and student enrollment in the various course opportunities that we have at the secondary level as well.
Would you like to report on ASER?
Yeah, ASER met this morning for the second time this school year. That's intergovernmental group. We didn't have as good a participation probably at today's meeting as we did in the last one, but we had the city, the county, the school district, and the chamber represented.
ACC.
And Marshalltown Community College as well, even though they're on break. It was very interesting to hear from Jessica Kinzer about the compiling of assessed damage relative to the derate show. From what she shared today, it's probably going to be at least four or five times the degree of financial cost as what the tornado produced in 2018. Numbers aren't foamed up yet, but it was pretty eye-opening to hear her talk about that. And those are numbers that will be important, like, for us to be able to share also when we apply to FEMA for the tornado safe room consideration. Nan Benson and Steve Sol...
Solosik.
Solosik from the county talked about the fact that the courthouse exterior is about 99% complete, and then thanks to the derate show, the insurance company won't insure the new roof that was put on there, so now they have to replace the roofing, which will be worked on as it can be, weather-dependent. But she was really excited because they've got a lot of interior renovation and construction taking place there. And then, I'm trying to think, what else? Was there anything else of note?
Everybody's starting their budget work.
Yeah, budget work. We talked about some of the projects that we have pending that we're going out to bid on relative to the HVAC project, tornado safe room.
That's about it.
That was about it.
What have we done this evening to make education better for our students?
Nice report from the XLP crew on what we do for our highest-performing students.
We approved the at-risk budget.
Indeed.
Which is a really big deal for a lot of people.
We made a decision, however reluctantly, to do some things that can semester and continue what we're doing. I mean, at some point...
I think the, you know, the comments, the discussion, you know, within the board relative to concerns and our beliefs in terms of what's best for kids, our families, our employees, as there is the same debate and discussions that are happening all over the state and nation at this point. I think it's healthy to have those discussions, and it's okay to have differences of opinions and agree to disagree at times relative to what people think. I'm very hopeful that we'll continue to move in a more positive direction as we head into 2021, and we'll be in a better position to seriously consider other choices other than staying the course of what we have done this school year. It's hard to predict right now for sure where we'll be and what that will look like. But I will say that we have a lot more kids coming to school on a regular basis than many other districts. There are many at the same point in time who are talking about bringing back their elementary students every day for the first time this school year, who've been in the hybrid K through 12. Again, most of those decisions are based on the size of the building and the number of kids in it, and their ability to provide the necessary research-based mitigation strategies. So I'm thankful that we've been able to do what we've been able to do thus far, knowing that it's not perfect. And I think we received some comments today similar to comments in the past about how we need to continue to work towards, especially at Miller and the high school, providing more substantive, meaningful learning experiences for the students while they're in hybrid. And so all of those comments and suggestions, I continue to relay to both the middle school, high school administration, as well as our curriculum leadership team so we can continue to make improvements there and changes as warranted, similar to what we did at the elementary when we saw that, you know, the approach that we took to the online learning wasn't working also, you know, as well as we had hoped in the first semester. So I do appreciate and value all those different perspectives and opinions, and I don't take any of it lightly as we try to determine what's in the best interest of both our kids, our employees, our parents, and our community.
I have now volunteered three, twice, at Miller with their virtual learning assistance. And I really think, you know, when you talk about, you know, we're kind of learning as we go with this, because we weren't doing a lot of virtual instruction before. And the students come in, they ask questions, they're focused, and what I'm hearing from the teachers is that that is helping. They would like to see the students come prepared with more questions. You know, some of them are just coming in and sitting down, using the quiet time and working, and they'd like for the students, if they're out there listening or their parents are, to, if they're struggling with a particular subject, come prepared to ask those questions, because we have people there to help, and they're anxious to do so. But we are learning as we do this, and I think it's getting better.
Thank you all. My quote for this evening comes from Laura Ingalls Wilder, and she says, "Our hearts grow tender with childhood memories and love of kindred, and we are better throughout the year for having in spirit become a child again at Christmas time. May Santa bring you all the toys you want." Wishing you all health and a great year.